Welcome, everybody, to the January 29th, 2025 Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting. I would everyone rise and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're going to start with attendance. First, we have Commissioner Godu, Commissioner Tom Morello and myself, Kate Foyle. In the room, we have Allison from the Class C. The, let's see, who else? Do you want to be Jason? Or do you want to be? Shannon Talcott Conan, Drew Gates, Chuck Nickerson. In Zoomland, we have Pat Conway, Kathy Stacy, Sheriff Consegos, and we have one guest here. If you want, I'm sorry, would you mind?
She's from the grant, but we had asked prior to her name, so Christine.
Christine, welcome, Christine. Thank you for being in attendance.
Thank you for having me.
All right, we're going to go right into our consent agenda and we'll take the motion regarding minutes.
I will take, I make a motion to approve the January 2nd, 2025, non-public minutes and the January 8th, 2025, public meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I, I'll do.
Okay.
Okay, on the non-public minutes of January 8th, there were two items that I think were lacking. The first one.
Sorry, I just want to ask one thing. Were you just talking about the January 2nd, non-public? You said.
No, the January 8th, public.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said no.
So, two items on that. It says that we voted for liaisons, but it doesn't identify who was voted to what liaison. And it would seem to me that should be recorded in the minutes.
Yeah.
So, I, I'd like to ask Leila to, to add that in.
I think that's.
The other issue that I had with the minutes was, as you scroll down, it says American Express, and all it says is, "We had a discussion about American Express." Honestly, I don't remember what we talked about. I was looking at like, I suppose I can go look at the recording, but I, I just think it needs just a, a little bit more detail, just like what the topic was, and so if we could request to have those little adjustments.
To the chairman's.
I, I think that's all we did, but then we should just say that, you know, because it was like, we had a discussion. Okay, what was it? You know.
I think those, so if we just want to table, we could approve the, the non-public meeting minutes of January 2nd and then table the January 8th.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so I moved the table, January 8th, meeting minutes, so.
Okay, on the, I will just, I'm going to just do one pro, on the motion to approve the January 2nd and table the January 8th minutes, Commissioner Tom Morello.
And to table you.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that. Next, we have the HR biweekly recruitment reports. Allison, do you want to?
Yeah, I think we're trending really well. You can see what our hires were for January 13th, 27th, and February 10th so far. We have some LNA's coming in. We have a weekend nurse manager. We have some question officers that came in, our director of nursing. You can see that we received 125 applications between January 10th and 23rd, and the activity on that, and that was, that, thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments?
No, I.
Just.
Well, I'm happy with what I'm looking at. We keep hiring people and, you know, we're on our way to, you know.
Well, we've exceeded our, well, we exceeded our, you know, when we look at, oh, am I going, I'm, I'm moving right along to HR nursing.
That's fine, it's all the same.
It's all one in the same, but I just was struck so, just so impressed that we, you know, our goal when we started and I know Commissioner Tom Morello, you weren't here, but Commissioners of Dew and I were the ones who felt very strong we about giving the stipends and trying to, coupled with some of the efforts across the board with HR and, and long-term care to have the short app and all these things, and we hit our 17 halfway through the year, and now we're just exceeding that and increasing our, our employee, number of employees, and I feel like every week you see more LNA applications or new hires, and it's just fantastic.
There was one item that just kind of struck me, and I forgot to bring it with me. On, on the page that has the, oh, I got all kinds of help, yeah, thank you. The diagram that shows how many recruits, it's not on this one, shows how, how many recruits we need that was still pending. The, the second line, it was divided by without, without not including the empty wings, how many people we were looking for. It looked like we still needed like 34 LNA's full-time. Is that, am I, am I still?
Yeah, so, if I can interject, so we knew as we were kind of moving forward with this, that day shift fills up sooner, so we kind of had conversations as a team around, you know, are we going to try and push to some of the other shifts, et cetera? But we didn't want to risk losing anyone, and because our agency numbers were so high, that we said just kind of, they come in seven to three, now that we're down to that four, four or five, having some conversations around now shifting and trying to push for some of the other shifts. So, a lot of our recruits have done on day shift, which is wonderful, but three to 11, we're still predominantly an agency.
But 34?
Thirty, thirty, yeah.
Thirty-six? We still need 36 LNA's.
Yeah.
You know anyone that wants to apply to be an LNA? Come on down.
Public service announcement.
Exactly. Okay, I just wanted to note that, that even though we're doing great, there's still a big hole to fill.
There is, but I think that there's wonderful things that have come out. Autumn continues to have great ideas, and then in February, and I can't recall the exact date off the top of my head, the employee engagement specialist is also going to be joining, so once that comes up too, and kind of hits the, hits the floor, I think it'll be another great addition. And it is into the leadership calls, so I'm excited to kind of see it all come together now.
All right, great.
Great. Okay, next, we have payroll and.
Make a motion to approve payroll, spending amount of $1,940,579.73 for the dividend ending January 25th, 2025.
Second.
Now, discussion?
Just a quick thing, the net payroll was a little bit higher this time around because this is the third biweekly payday of the month, so there's not Bennett, there's no benefit deductions. So, employees want to notice that, no health, no dental withholdings for this third payment of the month.
How could we have a third biweekly?
It's just, the cycle goes.
I know, yeah, it's the language I was taking from.
We, you don't get one. But, you know, Chuck, thank you to you and your team for getting this done so quickly. I know it is probably a rush today to get it done before, you know, we're meeting today, so I appreciate on behalf of all of us the accommodations to get this thing done. Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello, and I vote yes. Commissioners update?
I don't have anything.
I just, I attended the building oversight committee meeting today, well-attended by some state reps that I haven't seen for a while, so it's pretty nice to see them all, a good, hard-working group, and they're thrilled. They will have an update on Friday with the executive committee on the meeting. Probably seems pretty, pretty happy where we stand. A lot of good questions answered, a lot of like organic furniture, obviously, when we're moving in, a lot of questions that they needed answered, but I think it's a good committee and they're supportive of the, of the new building, so.
Yeah, that's great. Well, we have the, we're survey here over in assisted living, that's the big update, which is, they showed up today, so that's taking place right now.
Yeah.
The official state survey?
Yeah, yeah, so life safety came the 30th or 31st, and the clinical side is here currently.
Okay, so, you ready?
Report back next week.
We're ready.
They're ready.
Oh, it's fine, I was going to walk in there, and I walked in, I saw people that I'm not used to seeing, I'm like, I think I'm going to go back. I used to cut in, I said, "That doesn't look familiar, that person," and then I think I would go back outside.
Back away slowly.
I did have my mask on and have my badge on, everything, I looked, feel like I belonged there, but I said, "I don't belong there, I'm going outside."
And we have Christine here, who is overseeing the grant program, and so perhaps, Christine, thank you so much for joining us, and perhaps we could use this time to get a little update on how the grant program's going, and if you need anything.
Yeah, so I'll give you a, a progress report. I know you have a lot on your agenda, and then if anybody has any questions, I'll, so I wanted to give you a sense of where we are right now. I came on board in November, and I've been signing up seniors since probably sometime in December. And right now, I have 18 actively enrolled people, and they are being served by Silverthorn in Salem. And I can give you a little bit of the demographics, just so you get a picture. The people that they serve are from 14 cities and towns, so it isn't just Salem, you know, that area. And that includes Seabrook and Chester, Plastow, Atkinson, a lot of towns. Of that group, it's about half female, half male. A third of those folks are over 90. The youngest is 74, the oldest is 94. Most of the people that I've signed up have, they either live with a son or daughter, or they live with a spouse. Most of them have some sort of dementia or Alzheimer's. And when I've met with them and talked with them, they're just delightful. And to get the, the question is filled out, I ask a lot of personal questions. But doing that, I get to know these personal stories, and it's, some of it's heartbreaking. These folks want to keep their loved ones at home. That's the, that's the common denominator. And so what these day programs are doing, and with the help of the transportation, it's giving respite to their family members, which I think is the whole purpose of this grant. So, I think, even though we're in the beginning stage of it, I feel confident we'll be able to enroll more folks. And then I've been in touch with Easter Sales Sue Reynolds, so they were supposed to have a meeting with, I don't know exactly what their process is, but she is interested. They could possibly have a similar contract with us, and Chuck has helped me with that. But they're on the fence, and I'm not sure how that's going to go, because obviously we want to include more cities and towns and a, and a broader, you know, section of Rockingham County, but I think that's already happening. And I'm thrilled that this has gotten off to this start, and I just continue to meet with them, answer questions for them, and however we can, you know, support them in keeping these folks at home.
Question, have you had a chance to speak with the Salem caregivers and the Derry Caregivers Association? I know they're volunteer-based, but.
Yes, thank you for that referral. I spoke with both of them, we had meetings, and I left our brochures, and so hopefully we'll get some referrals from them. Both lovely women and really helpful, really informative. I got a lot of great information. So, that was really helpful.
They're, they're a resource to help identify people who have the need.
Absolutely.
Did they turn out to be a resource to provide some of the need? Or not, not really appropriate?
No, not that second half, no.
Okay.
But they have services that I wasn't aware of. So, in my speaking to families, for example, I could say, "Do you know that in Derry, you can get a wheelchair and a walker and all these free things that could help out, instead of having to purchase those items?" They offer so many things. And so, you know, as I'm speaking to families, I'm a licensed social worker, and there's a lot of things that I can advocate for them, and just meeting those two women, it filled in a lot of gaps of what I wasn't aware. All the services, all the nonprofits in New Hampshire, it's kind of amazing.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you for following up with them.
And. Yeah, they were great.
Two questions, one, and this is anyone, one question just for Zoom land, people who may watch us. So, my first question is, what do you think the, how many more people in the community can we help with the grant? What do you think? Like, what's the capacity? How much more space is there at Silverthorn and?
Okay, so right now, Silverthorn can have 32 people. On their busiest day, they have 28, on the slow day, 25, so they have some capacity left. Of the 18 people that I've enrolled, 14 people are taking advantage of transportation. And what Jessica's way to said was, there are more people who would come if they had, if, if Silverthorn was able to hire an additional driver. So, it's really just a logistical thing. Everybody has to get there at the same time in the morning and leave at the same time. So, one driver is doing his best, but they have, they would love to have hired an additional driver, and then, and the same thing with Easter Sales, if they decide, the Easter Sales in Manchester, that they want to come on board, then we could serve a lot more people.
That's good to know, it's sort of that barrier, and, you know, if there's anything we can explore on our end to expand that pool of people to service. And my other question is, for anyone in Zoom land, how, how do you apply? Sure. How should people be in contact to, to go through the application process?
Um, there's a website, the Rockingham Care Program has what, what's turned out to be the most, you know, really the, the easiest and the simplest is to have a referral from a program, because some of the people, for example, there's a woman that I'm in touch with, and she's 87, her husband's 89. They're not going to use the QR code, unfortunately. And even the sons and daughters that are in their 60s, so I think a personal phone call, that referral is the best. They could go on our website, and, and my phone number, my email is there, and I'll reach out to anybody.
Well, thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
I, I would just say, she probably doesn't even know where you are, but that's okay. Sometimes I like to be undercover, but I supported adult daycare forever, and I wasn't one of the people that voted to take it out of this building. You'll be right up front with that. And, but it's okay, because we came up with a good alternative, and I remember going to all five places down. We had it down, the Hampton Beach had one, we had Easter Sales, we had the Hampstead Place, and if you ever want to spend the day that's really special, go to those places. I hated that the Hampstead weren't closed. They made the greatest cookies ever. I would go there, she knew Tom was coming.
Oh, that's funny.
I love it. I know Sue Reynolds, she actually lives in a great town, my town, San Diego. When you see, when you see Sue, tell her.
I will, and if I can add one more thing, across the board, the families are so grateful for this, particularly the transportation piece, and they all, they're all grateful, and they, they can use any support, and they wanted me to just relay to you that this is a huge help for them.
I mean, even Salem had Maria was over there, but I remember the story with Linda Steer. Linda Steer was the director of the Hampstead one, one of the senior care, and the only reason she took that job, she had a daughter that was very, very handicapped, and passed away a couple of years ago before they closed. That's the only reason she opened that place. And I used to go in there, and it was amazing. That lady is like Mother Teresa for adult medical daycare. She was the nicest woman you could ever meet, so I love it.
Yeah, the staff is wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah, Steph's wonderful. Well, thank you so much.
If I can just interject and credit to Christine, so when we started in October, when we opened it up, we didn't have any applicants, and we were really struggling, do you think that's fair, Chuck, to say, to get any kind of momentum and progress? And when Christine joined the program, I, I know I've shared this with you, she's doing a beautiful job. She really has kind of rolled up her sleeves and is spending time at the, at the actual centers to be able to assist people with it, and truly a lot of our progress and kind of momentum in it truly is credit to her and the relationship she's continuing to build, so.
Thank you.
Yes, and one quick thing, regarding transportation, as far as for Silverthorn, the contract was not like how many drivers, it was about providing transportation. So, if there is a need for another driver, it could be a matter of working out the numbers, and there's a contract amendment to replace the current appendix, like, or Exhibit A, as far as what that set monthly amount is, plus the mileage. It's a matter of just bringing that forward. There were documents that were submitted to DHHS that included the budget revision to bring some monies down from a couple different categories into contracted services to support the transportation. And there is room in that budget revision to take on additional dollars towards subcontracting.
So, they would need a vehicle?
Yes, it sounds like.
They have one.
Have the vehicle, they need the driver.
Or do they need a second vehicle and driver?
No, they have, they have two vehicles.
They just don't have two drivers?
Right.
Maybe we ought to encourage them to pursue that.
Well, I think we're waiting for, hopefully for them to get numbers back to us exactly what they need as far as, is it, you know, two drivers at 20 hours a week, or, or what exactly is it? Because right now, that Appendix A was based upon 30 hours a week.
For one driver.
How many drivers? This is again, the contract of transportation service.
Yeah.
So, 40 hours is needed instead. Again, just matter of doing a contract amendment.
Great, I think we should.
So, I'm waiting, yeah, just so you know, Chuck, I'm waiting for Jessica's way to get that information to me, and then I'll pass that along.
Okay, thank you.
Well, what.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Really valuable having you here today, just so we can bring forward these, you know, if we can enroll.
Been a long time coming.
Yeah, if we can, people.
Thank you, I appreciate.
Fairer solution, that's all the better.
Sure.
Yeah, I appreciate your support. Thank you.
All right, so now we're moving on to human resources. We've got a number, some exceptional requests.
Okay, I'll make a motion for an exception request to personnel policy 7.4 for long-term care service employee EW, as recommended by the senior, senior director of Human Resources.
Second.
Any discussion?
This sounds like a permanent solution for extra duties, is that right?
Yeah, so she's absorbed a lot of duties, kind of through some of the changes. For a while, there were stipends, she's continued to do them, and it's just kind of adding the pieces that she's retaining and compensating for them, and it's still within, correct me if I'm wrong, Allison, but it's still within that pay bracket.
My, I had a conversation, you know, can't tell, 20 minutes if you ever want to call her on it, she'll. See why it was kind of funny, because EW, I actually called.
Only 20 minutes?
Yeah, we went on and on and on, we went.
We knew you had a hard stop.
It is kind of funny, because I called and EW actually answered the phone, I said, "Can you bring me up the screen about?" And I said, "EW, that's you."
She's not aware that I'm reading this for.
But I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know what I was talking about, that's perfect.
All right, we're going to call it. On the motion, Commissioner Tom Morello.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Now, we have an exceptional request to internal practice related to CBA holidays for the department correction.
Now, making motion to approve an exceptional request to internal practice related to a CBA holiday, but two correction. Department corrections employee JN and EJ, as recommended by the senior director of Human Resources.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it's perfectly reasonable to. Yeah, it's just an oversight, yeah, it's not the intent.
Right, okay. On the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello, and I vote yeah. Okay, we have a general leave request for long-term care services.
Make a motion to approve a general leave request for long-term care services employee in New Hampshire, with county portion of all benefits to continue from January 24th, as recommended by the senior director of long-term care services and the senior director of Human Resources.
Second.
Our discussion?
I'm not sure I understand. It says, "For all benefits to continue for January 24th."
It's just, it's one day that went exceeded the OBD's available ability to sign, so we're bringing it forward just for that one day.
Oh, okay.
I guess, and is it otherwise, everything is back to work? Because they were, they own their.
You're off by a day.
Yes, but their start date was pretty, was fairly recently, so I was just trying to understand. Okay.
Okay, I'll do it.
On the motion, Commissioner Tom Morello.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yeah. All right, here's a service award event contract.
I'll make a motion to approve a special event contract for Zavino's Vineyards and authorize a $750 deposit to secure the reservation for the 2025 years of service awards event scheduled for October 22nd, 2025, and authorize the chair to send all necessary documents.
Second.
Any discussion? A nice event last year.
Oh, they, they, no, they, they put on a nice event, and where they could go back.
And I.
I'm just jealous that Commissioner Tom Morello can walk and I have to drive.
It doesn't change. Your obligations don't change when you're on an ITV car. Or if I told, electric or other. On the, on the other thing I want to say is, I think we, last year, we moved invited partners or guests, plus ones, and I think that was a really nice change that was made after hearing from employees, and I look forward to, and it was, it's nice that sort of you know can accommodate that, and it's really great that we can include anybody's plus one, it's really.
Yeah, I think I had more participation because of the plus one, people felt, you know, comfortable, somebody ended up, you know, it was, it was good.
Great. Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Moving on to department head updates, we're racing right along. We will start in Zoom land today, just change it up. Sheriff?
Good afternoon. Nothing really new to report. Just getting our new office manager in line with all the county policies and, and just making sure Catherine's been helping her out on the side a little bit, and actually, she's doing a really good job over there. I'm sure we all know about the earthquake and our dispatch center, those phones didn't stop ringing for a while, so. But nothing really new to report, it's just, like I said, just trying to get her squared away, which, which she is, she's doing a great job over there, and, and I'm sure she's doing a great job, and that's about it. Have a great day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi.
This is you this afternoon.
Good afternoon, yeah, absolutely. Nothing really to report, I just thought I would check in. This is nice, because sometimes, as you know, on Thursday mornings, I can't attend, so this is really great, so, thank you.
Okay, Pat, likewise, right? You're not in court this.
Right, right, yeah, so it's actually a good time for me, for the most part. Not much to report, we're busy here. I, we're just did closings on a eight, seven-day or eight-day trial. I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, it said, AFSA case, seven and eight-year-old victims, little boys, so keep your fingers crossed that we get guilty verdicts on that. That's really it, so, thanks.
That's a time-consuming case, but well worth the, all the effort that goes into it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Jude?
Good morning, good afternoon. Also, in facilities, we're struggling with some of the cold weather and some issues in our penthouses, but we're getting over it. The coil I mentioned last week on Eblock has only come in eight weeks. So, we're trying to find somebody that can custom make it for us, I may have an answer in the next day or so. Building oversight went very well this morning. They are indeed very supportive and very excited about the building. It's pretty nice. They'd like to do a review of the solar array at their next meeting, so. They're excited, it's, they're, they're a good bunch, because they pay a lot of attention, and it's kind of fun to sit with them. Other than that, I think all as well, getting ready for the executive committee meeting on Friday. Really looking forward to the department heads and commissioners that are going to be able to do the walkthrough tour. Have these laid out a little bit of a walking path, so that it'll be safer for us. And we're really looking forward to showing off the building. I know people are shopping a bit, just to see what their new space is going to look like, so I'm very much looking forward to that.
Really exciting.
It is exciting.
It's really exciting.
Thank you so much, that's all.
Hi, Chuck Nickerson, senior director of finance. As usual, busy with grants, latest update as far as the federal freeze on, on grants, federal loans now. As usual, busy with grants. Um, latest update as far as the federal freeze on, on uh grants, federal loans now. They've even rolled it back now too. There was a injunction that was thrown by federal court, but now it's been uh rolled back for the moment um by the administration. That's good news because obviously we had lots of concerns as far as what was going to happen with that. There would have been no impact to the ARPA, what we consider ARPA because that's SLFRF monies, state local fiscal recovery monies that we already received in cash. So there won't have been any issues.
That was my big concern.
Yeah, yeah, anything, anything that was received already in hand in cash, no problem. It's more like your reimbursement type grants that there would have been issue that you hadn't yet received direct funds from the feds or pass-through funds from the state agency that was getting the, the federal grant. So, but it could have impacted some other grants so that we have going on. So, um, yes, so it's, for, for now, I guess they breathe a sigh of relief and oh, you know, like I mentioned last week, so I mean, trying to keep on top of all that stuff. Um, there is uh emails going around about, again, that congressional discretionary spending as well. Um, so as far as, you know, departments taking a look at uh some projects that might be able to be funded. Uh, again, usually it looks like you'll take the form of a grant like two years down the road, but again, still something to potentially look at. The um funding notification gives what sections or areas are covered that, that you could see federal funding for. And there is a portion of each federal agency and department's budget that's allocated for these items. So. So uh I think, yeah, because it maybe, yeah, so there could be a chance maybe regarding um water, wastewater related items too. Go for some monies there. So I think that might be a worthwhile thing. I know that corrections with last year, was that two years now? As far as that you, uh, your department put in for one as well.
You are certainly.
No, it is the congressional discretionary spending.
Oh, yeah, yes.
So it'll probably be like next year or late this year, we might hear about that round. But anyways.
Does Molly have bandwidth to go and look for grants for some of the cities and towns?
She hasn't. And she actually has an email thing that she sends out to the board of selectmen or the, or the contacts in uh each town about grant opportunities and if it's something about firefighters, she contacts, she has an email listing as far as reach out to fire departments, things like that.
So in Salem, there's a uh, a need to redo a playground. And I was shocked to learn that they had estimates that were like in the three million dollar range. It, I, I, I says, can't they just go get a swing set? And, you know, obviously the answer is no. Um.
No, it's federal money.
So if um, if there's something available, this is specifically for the Field of Dreams in, in Salem. It's owned by the town, but it's managed by a volunteer group. Um, it, 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 it's a, a ton of money for them to try to raise that, you know, they, they, they've been doing a good job with other things, aspects, but this, this part might be overwhelming. If there was, if she identified something that they could go apply for, that would be uh really helpful because I, specifically the group said they didn't have the bandwidth to apply and look for that kind of stuff. And I would imagine this isn't isolated. This could be a service that could be available, you know, on a broader basis too, you know, for other towns, you know.
Yeah, and that's, that's one thing that we had said that should be a resource as well for all thirty-seven communities. Uh, like I said, for Portsmouth, I think their only job title in name that covers grant writing or, or grants is actually about their own CDBG program. It's not necessarily.
They're not looking for anything.
Oh, so, you know, that's my understanding as far as Portsmouth goes. Now, granted, certain communities might have someone in a different job title who, when they can, you know, look for grant opportunities, but there's no one specifically designated. But that is their job. So.
Well.
Yeah, I'll pass it on.
That's my request. Yeah, great, thank you.
Um, again, other than that, you know, it was a little bit of a crunch for Carol to get hands on, but we, we did. Um, and uh, again, just things are always busy uh month after quarter end. Again, like Jude brought up, reminder that this Friday, uh nine thirty in the Hilton auditorium is the executive committee meeting. Um, and again, just overall very busy, busy with association counties items too. Uh, the legislative committee calls and everything, so we're.
I imagine right now that with all the, it's just crazy.
Thousand bills this, this term.
With everything, with all the grants and uh Medicaid. It's been a lot to juggle, nursing, some of it triple down.
Yes, been very busy things, but um it's all good. So thank you.
Allison.
Hi, senior director, Allison Kipikoski, human resources. Um, if, I'm just gearing up for negotiation session. So as you can tell, I've been organizing meetings, confirming the other side. So I think we're all set with dates. I've sent out calendar invites. Um, I just wanted to give you a heads up. I'm going to be running probably over on my recruitment budget. Um, we probably spent about seventeen to twenty thousand dollars the first part of July between three positions, critical positions, the senior director of long-term care, director of nursing and prevention, infectionist, uh infection preventionist, clinical educator. I can go over five thousand. I have money in other parts of my budget, but I'm going to allocate at least four thousand to shift over so that we can continue to dedicate some sponsorships to LNA's health hands and IRN's that are critical need. And so I'll just keep you posted as that goes. Um, do you think you're going to be, if you don't mind me, like within that five thousand? We're. I'm probably going to use it right up. Probably will use it. Are you going to exceed that? I guess this is. Um, I'm trying not to. We're meeting weekly and she's able to um do the percentages each week to move them up and down. It depends on the number of clicks and depending on the um, the need out in the community where the clicks are happening, it um, it, it algorithms what the high clicks are and we get charged and it just moves from one knee to the next. But um, we're going to use the money. I know we'll use it, but I'd rather her know now that she has a, I, I said four thousand for now, just so I have a thousand buffers so that I'm right at the five thousand. Just so that she doesn't feel, you know, um anxious about spending that money. I want her to know to go forward with it. So I wanted to let you know. Um, Representative Edwards is coming in to meet with me today with Chantel and Jason Henry and Chuck's available. It's the positions. Um, he set the, you know, tone with me that he wants to go over any stuff that I'm presenting to the executive committee from the board on retitles, repurposes, new positions before the executive meeting so that he can speak to them at the board, you know, the executive meeting today because of his uh schedule was the only day at four o'clock, but he just hit me up and just said he'll be here at three thirty. So we'll meet afterwards and go over that and he can just get all the information he needs prepared for Friday. But thank you. It's just a really busy time, but thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Hmm, Ken Henry.
Uh, one forty-three hours of this morning in house, uh, working on a budget, obviously. And the legislative conference, again, remind everybody that is the twenty-fourth of February. If you haven't signed up, please do. It's twenty-five dollars. It'll be great to go. Uh, still looking for sponsors. I have a letter going out to several different sponsors. Um, we're legislative conference, so if anybody has one that thinks they want to do a sponsor for it, let me know. Um, Molly was over this morning of talking grants with um Mary Beth because we're looking at two significant grants. Um, while we're sitting here, Kevin Warwick, who's consultant, just texted me and said that uh doesn't think this um, any, anything that's going on with the federal government is going to mess with these things. If anything, we'll push back maybe six months of timeline perhaps. Protection isn't a bad thing because we were doing the building, happy with that actually, did. So that's going well. Um, Molly's getting a lot of, you know, information and she told me again, she was very thankful that we do have Kevin Warwick and Mary helping him because, helping her because uh she's never had that before. So this is helping her learn to, to put all these pieces together. It's going to make her stronger and county stronger later in the future. I am happy to announce that um Sergeant Pelchuk uh had tested for the lieutenant of staff development training and he will be moving into that role once Lieutenant Warden retires sometime in June. But we're going to have a lot of cross-training in that timeframe for an easy transition. Um, we also have, uh, that means they were first shift in a third shift sergeant opening just posted today. Once those get filled, then I'll see how many corporal positions I have. We'll try to work on that. And then um we'll back to focusing more on the officers a little bit. We've had some turnover because there's some things that have gone on, so we're, we're not hurting, but we're more numbers open than we wanted to, um, but we're doing okay there. And yeah, on that, um, Kathy had said, you know, Chuck did a little bit. Yes, there's a lot of stuff going on Kathy with legislative stuff. I know either president or no, but she's on there a lot. There's, you know, today was one of the ones on the um immigration bill, which a flyer went out at eleven o'clock this morning. The counties are saying no to it because of to be significant costs and it's just all um, it's a good effort for a lot of different people on there and just uh, I will say Rockingham County is in um pretty strong because you know, you have Allison on there too. Um, so it's a good group of us and I just must say that.
Thanks for voting me in without asking me to. I just found out I'm on the finance committee.
Uh.
I said, don't they have to ask me? They said, no, Jason appointed you.
I did.
I'm like, all right, I guess that's what I'm on.
You were not there, uh, and they all like.
Don't miss the meeting.
I'm like, he's like, I'm sorry, I'm gonna take it. Of course you, um, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
On that note.
Oops. Um, so our census, the home is a hundred and thirty-two. Our census at assisted living is forty-nine. I, we have first staff. We have one COVID positive resident, one COVID positive, positive staff and one flu positive staff. However, we cleared our second outbreak, so from the respiratory where we were getting hit with both, that one has cleared. Um, general updates, our GON officially started, Siobhan. So she's in orientation right now. If you haven't, please, I'll eventually bring her to one of these, I promise. Um, assisted living, we have their surveys dated. We just are in our second round of the new orientation we rolled out, which is an interdisciplinary where facilities, HR are talking kind of to their specialty. Um, with hopes to have kind of more streamlined uh better process and it seems to be going really well. Uh, just found a grant that I looped Molly in to that we signed up for. There's a, only I think six spots, but it's a significant amount of money around fall prevention. So a handful of us have signed up to watch and kind of learn more about it uh to potentially look at doing that. And the uh chaplain, I just have to give her the utmost credit. She has hit the ground rolling things that she's phenomenal. She's, the residents are enjoying her. Just the thing she's rolling out and ideas she's having is just phenomenal and not even just from a resident standpoint, even around like a staff support where as you know, one of the residents that was a long-standing resident and had a lot of connections about looking at how we can implement something to support staff through some of those pieces as well. And the last thing, I can forward you the email if you don't have it. Um, New Hampshire Magazine's Best of New Hampshire is up. Um, we are now nominated in it, so we did a couple write-ins. So if you haven't got it, go in and vote. Um, but other than that, just looking at systems and budgeting. But please vote for us.
Yes.
It's tell you that the chaplain, again, she also helps ours, that's not just for the inmates. She helps the staff. Brings people in and connections and people, I must admit, they go to work on the side and she is just. We are very, very lucky to have her for this county. I could tell you how much it's tough.
Wonderful.
When we remember back in the day, I couldn't find anybody and we put it out. Um, it was very, very difficult and to find somebody who is non-denominational, who doesn't push it down your throat and was really open like that is absolutely amazing. So.
So wonderful support and resource. We're, I agree.
A breath of fresh air too in just like looking at things. You know, a sacrament of this sick is always a challenge because of the availability. She worked on this whole piece that we're doing where there's another verbiage I'm going to get wrong, so I'm going to skip over and helped create like a flyer for education for family and staff to be able to meet that need without the, when the individual's not available for sacrament. It was like, it's truly just amazing to see what she's coming up with every week I turn around, there's something new. And it's beautiful.
It's really, it is beautiful. That is, that is the word. So, thank you.
That is all.
Okay. Well, um, we are now moving on to new business, old business. And we have, uh, we do have one uh new business motion regarding um the ever-source energy easement.
Now make a motion to approve the request to grant the easement of ever-source energy as outlined, as outlined in the document accompanying the letter dated January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five letter in a uh relation to the solar rate project.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, the only discussion I have on it is that my name is on it as acting chair. I, I, I mean, I'm not sure how we handle that. I could sign it or you can, we could correct somewhere.
I, I know, I said the same thing to Leila. It's fine. I'm fine if you want to sign it. It's, I mean, however.
I can act for that moment.
Yeah, exactly.
All of them you sign it, there's a bill.
But whatever, well, one of us, I agree.
It's not the confusing to slow it down is where I was concerned.
It's simply pro forma two. Um, and this is just a, so that uh ever-source can access the solar array. All it gives them, we're not giving up.
The call that they invoked is at the, right where the, you turn the driveway with the solar array. It's, it's all they want to get on their side.
Right. It's very common.
Twenty.
Yeah, it's all over. These types of easements are very common in real estate land, so. Um, okay, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Rowell, and I vote yes.
Thank you.
Does anybody have uh any other new business or old business?
I don't.
Uh, John, say one thing. I, I gone to a funeral on Friday for some of you guys that knew that would be thirteen years. He had ten siblings uh combined. And as I was in at the funeral, that family could not say enough about what we did for this young uh resident that lives there. The family was ecstatic at all the care that he brought. Probably the most amazing part that I saw through that was I saw the IRN, she's a per diem. And for twenty minutes while I was in line, I tried to convince her to come on board. I'm not sure if I got it yet, but I worked twenty minutes on it. But this was a per diem nurse that actually took a day out of work and actually went to the funeral. I mean, that, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty, that's pretty sharp, you know?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's someone we want on our team.
Yeah, I tried for twenty minutes. I'm not sure. I even tried the husband. I tried to get both of them, so I'm hoping I work on it. So, but it was really nice to family. When I tell you, they were so proud of what, you know, we, what we did in this thing for this gentleman. So it was nice.
Tell Autumn to watch out, Tom's on the prowl.
So, you know, I think he gets fifty bucks, but I would donate.
Okay, um, any public comments? I don't see anything. So uh with that, um, we're going to move into non-public and uh Commissioner Tom Rowell.
Make a motion for non-public on the New Hampshire R C ninety-one, uh, equal and three, we're going to do a personnel, personnel, and then uh, gay internal practices.
Okay.
Second.
Um, on that, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Rowell, and I vote you. Thirty-six, and we. Okay, we are back in public session. We had um five non-public sessions and I'm going to turn the floor over to Commissioner Tom Rowell to make some motions.
I'll make a motion to seal the non-public minutes for a period indefinite. Um, because it is determined that the, the volume, the volgence of the information likely would affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board.
Second.
Uh, are we on all of them? I think.
Yep.
I think the third one doesn't need to be.
Third one doesn't? So you want to do.
In the, with the exception of uh number three, which I don't think we need to see.
With an exception of number three.
I'm agreeing with that.
Okay. So, um, uh, on the amended motion, um, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Rowell.
Yes.
And I vote yes. One more motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, we are officially adjourned.